Meeting is called to order. Stell, if you'd please read the call.
Notice of Public Meeting of the City Commission of the City of Brownsville. Pursuant to Chapter 551 Title V of the Texas Government Code, the Texas Open Meetings Act Notice is hereby given to the City Commission of the City of Brownsville, Texas. In accordance with Article 5, Section 12 of the Charter of said city, we'll convene an executive session workshop and regular meeting on Tuesday, April 17, 2007, at 4:30 PM, 5:30 PM, and 6:00 PM in the commission chambers on the second floor of the Brownsville City Hall Federal Building located at 1001 East Elizabeth Street, Brownsville, Cameron County, Texas. Executive session items. A, Discussion pursuant to Sections 551.087 and 551.072 of the Texas Government Code regarding Economic Developments and Real Property. Item B, Discussion pursuant to Section 551.072 of the Texas Government Code regarding real property. Item C, Discussion pursuant to Section 551.087 of the Texas Government Code regarding economic development opportunities.
May I move that we go into executive session?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Camarillo, second by Commissioner Zanos. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Begin executive session.
Good afternoon, everybody. I'd like to thank all of you for joining us this afternoon. Right now, we've got a workshop item. Item A, Discussion Regarding a Citywide Recycling Project with the Students of Project Citizens. We see that we have some special guests visiting us today from Stell Middle School, and I believe they're the ones that are going to be assisting Commissioner Camarillo in today's presentation of the workshop. Is that right? All right.
Episcopal Day School is also here to help us.
Oh, very good. Very good. I saw the principal. All right, well, step forward.
Mayor, before they make their way forward, I just wanted to note, a couple of weeks ago, I had the privilege of being invited to come speak and listen to the kids at Stell Middle School, and so that was a campus where I and my family had been to. And to hear the presentation on recycling and some of the options that these kids had for the City of Brownsville was tremendous. So, Mr. Lial, thank you for inviting me, and again, he has a great, great group of kids that see that Brownsville has a real bright future in terms of taking care of its environment. So, students, thank you all for being here.
Good evening. We are students at Stell Middle School, and our project is called Look Who's Recycling, too. The problem is that citizens of Brownsville are not recycling. We believe this is a major issue that should be addressed by the city government. Our present class and our prior project citizen class in 2004 surveyed over 100 citizens of our community. We asked if they would recycle, if the city would pick up recyclable goods at home. As you can see in your booklet, 84% agreed in 2004 and 96% agreed in 2007. We also asked how often they would like for the recyclable goods to be picked up. In 2004, 36% said once a week, 30% said twice a week, 16% said once a month, and 17% said twice a month. In 2007, 46% said once a week, 22% said twice a week, 18% said once a month, and 14% said twice a month. Some disadvantages to recycling are that it will cost money to implement the program, and it will be hard to educate the public. An advantage is that recycling will improve the environment and will add beauty and pride to the place we call home. And now, here's Sandra.
I'm sorry. Could you tell us your name? Lorena.
Thank you, Lorena.
Lorena Garcia, right? Okay.
Thank you, Lorena. We researched and compared the two cities of Brownsville and McAllen. The residential customers of McAllen receive two containers, a black one for garbage and a blue one for recyclable materials. Their garbage is picked up on either Monday or Tuesday, while recyclables are picked up on Thursday or Friday. McAllen charges $14.40 per month for both pickups. In your booklet, you will find a list of recyclable materials in McAllen. Today, there is also a computer recycling program in McAllen. There are no home pickups in Brownsville. Citizens must drop off their recyclables themselves. In your booklets, you will also find a list of recyclable materials in Brownsville. As you can see, McAllen has more of a variety of recyclable materials than in Brownsville. Brownsville charges $17.46 for only garbage pickup. We surveyed more than 100 households and asked if they would recycle to help their community. 1% disagreed, 5% had no opinion, and 94 agreed. Although Brownsville and McAllen both have recycling programs, McAllen's is more convenient. Now, here's Clarissa with our class policy.
Thank you, Sandra. After researching our alternative policies, we got together as a group to form our class policy. Our class policy is that Brownsville needs a recycling program like the one in McAllen. Brownsville currently only has one recycling center that only accepts a small variety of materials. We need Brownsville to have curbside recycling and have a regular schedule to be picked up. In your booklets, you will see that we surveyed over 100 households and asked if they would be willing to pay extra to have recyclable materials picked up at home. 48% were willing to pay $1 to $3 a month, 30% were willing to pay nothing, 18% were willing to pay $4 to $6 a month, and 4% were willing to pay $7 to $10 a month. Now, here's Lazarus with our action plan.
Thank you, Clarissa. Many individuals and organizations are recycling in the City of Brownsville. However, those efforts are making a very small impact in our landfills. The community is ready for recycling. Our research has shown that they are willing to make the effort to recycle. What the citizens of Brownsville need is leadership from the city. The city has the ability to put it all together and turn the effort of a few into a citywide effort. Only you can work with the city garbage contractors and demand curbside recycling. The environmental future of our city lies in your hands. Thank you.
I think Brownsville should recycle not only to save the environment or give extra space to the garbage disposal areas to save local residents' money, but that it saves birds from getting choked by eating plastic bags. Most importantly, it gives Brownsville, Texas, a sense of pride. It gives us a sense of pride because it gives us the right to say, "We proudly recycle," or "We save the environment by recycling reusable materials," or "We saved ourselves thousands of dollars." And "We save the birds that lives in our wildlife refuges that Brownsville residents love to go to." Saves the environment by not using so much space for garbage disposal areas or dumps. Brownsville is a major tourist attraction and fan of our very popular birding mecca. People may not know this, but we are harming our bird population by not recycling. It harms it by adding excess trash that could be recycled again, which the birds can eat and choke. These are some reasons why Brownsville should recycle. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter Michael.
Greetings. I'm Katherine Graef from sixth grade from Episcopal Day School. We all need to recycle. Our animals are in danger. We need to take care of our environment, and when I say "we," it means all of us. Often, we see garbage and plastic bags on the road. Right behind my house is a street, and between the gate and the street is a section of grass. People just throw their trash there. Also, my mother has a daycare. We also find paper all over it. My goal is to reach people and say to recycle. And that littering is destroying our environment. If BFI does not want to recycle, then we need someone to stand up and think about trying to recycle. So, I say to everybody, "Let's recycle," or, as people say, "Don't mess with Texas." Thank you for your time.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you. So, Mayor, just to conclude, I want to thank Mrs. Puignek. We spoke over the weekend at the Clean Brownsville event, and I want to thank Mr. Lial for bringing his kids and students. Again, thank you all for the great research that you all have compiled over the past few weeks or months. I think it's very deserving of each and every one of you, what you all have done in bringing this to light with the City Commission. I know, as we spoke earlier, this is something that City of Brownsville has looked at, you know, about four or five years ago. I think this community over the past year or so has gotten a little bit more involved in terms of what it does in recycling. I met a woman who's a volunteer at the Gladys Porter Zoo during Christmas, and her neighborhood, her trailer park actually recycles. So, each one of the residents there takes turn every other week. We see Episcopal Day School doing recycling. I helped implement recycling at St. Joseph's Catholic Church. We're seeing the university begin its phase one of recycling. So, here we have different entities, different pockets, population cohorts, doing something that will make an impact in Brownsville and better serve the community and its environment. So, hopefully down the road, or in the near future, students, I will bring something before the commission so that it begins an initial process to help recycle and help everyone in this community think like you all think. At the same time, just a quick note, some of our military folks that are in the armed services have had to recycle. One of my coworkers, when he was in the military, he was stationed in Germany, and in Germany, you didn't just throw your garbage like everybody else, that you actually recycled. To this day, he and many others continue that way of life, and I think that just speaks volumes, and hopefully that's a direction that we can go in. So, Mayor, the rest of the commissioners, I appreciate you all taking the time to hear the students from Pace and Episcopal and students. Thank you all very much, and good luck in the future.
Well, I want to thank Commissioner. If you all recall, we brought this up a few years ago, didn't quite get enough support, but hopefully this time around, we'll be able to get this moving forward. Been much in favor of recycling. It's an investment in our future, and the reality is, we have our kids telling us adults what we should be doing, so we should be paying more attention to what they're telling us. So, again, I want to thank all the students for being here and for taking the time out. Stell has been a leader in bringing issues to the attention of this commission in the past, and I know that they're going to continue to do it in the future. So, again, thank you all for being here, the kids from Episcopal Day School, and everybody that's involved in helping keep Brownsville a beautiful place. Thank you. We're going to have a recess. We cannot start the meeting any earlier than posted time at 6 o'clock, so I would tell you there's punching cookies out in the hallway, but there isn't, so. We'll be back in 20 minutes. This meeting is called to order. Everybody would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Leading us this evening are members of the Project Citizens from Stell Middle School, seventh grader Sandra Flores, Lorena Garcia, and Clarissa Gonzalez, along with eighth grader Lazarus Angel Lial.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of Texas, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I am a Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas one indivisible.
Lorena? Clarissa? Lazarus? Leading us in the invocation this evening is Reverend Greg Fish from the Central Christian Church.
Let us pray. Our Heavenly Father, I ask that all the dealings in this meeting would go to glorify You. I pray for everyone involved, that You would give wisdom and discernment to them, that decisions that are made will benefit their fellow man here in Brownsville. I ask that everybody would work together and efficiently for Your glory. And before we begin, Lord, our hearts go out to those families of the victims at Virginia Tech, and we pray that as they grieve for their lost loved ones, that You would give them peace for their hearts, and I pray this in Jesus's name. Amen.
Thank you, Reverend. May be seated. All right. Proclamations. BISD Adult Continuing Education Department. Commissioner Zanos?
Dr. Oscar Cantu, please come up. Is there any staff members with you, Dr. Cantu, or can we bring them up with you? All right. All right. Go down and read it. It's a respect.
All right. Good crowd. You all want to move a little bit?
Everybody get close, just like at work.
A proclamation of the City Commission of Brownsville, Texas, recognizing the BISD Adult Continuing Education Department for providing outstanding services to BISD and for enhancing educational opportunities to our community. Whereas, Dr. Oscar Cantu, Sr., Director of the Brownsville Independent School District, BISD Adult Continuing Education Program, and staff have exemplified the helping of others while expanding services throughout BISD, the City of Brownsville, and Cameron County. And whereas, Dr. Oscar Cantu, Sr., and the Adult Education Continuing Education Department have included additional learning sites, the Cameron County Social Teen Center and Adult Literacy Brownsville, Amphels, the Brownsville Herald, St. Joseph Catholic Church, Chrysler King Catholic Church, the Boys and Girls Club, Brownsville Housing Authority, the University of Texas at Brownsville, ITech, and various other community sites, and whereas the Adult Continuing Education Department has extended ELS-GED classes to Martin Elementary, Villanueva Elementary, Garden Park Elementary, Dr. Juliet Garcia Middle School, Perkins Middle School, and Porter High School. And whereas, Dr. Oscar Cantu, Sr., and the Adult Continuing Education Department are piloting a TEA Set de Saber, Thirst for Knowledge, program for BISD food service cafeteria employees to enhance literary skills in cafeteria food service. And whereas, the Adult Continuing Education Department has extended services for GED testing to include all of Cameron County and the Harlingen area Technical Vocational Colleges. And whereas, the department received a TEA state award for excellence, contract documents, and accurate submission of testing materials. Now, therefore, we, the members of the City Commission of the City of Brownsville, Texas, by virtue of the authority vested by the Charter said city, do hereby recognize and congratulate the BISD Adult Continuing Education Department. I'd like to add, and Dr. Oscar Cantu, and all of the staff, for representing the school district and community with perseverance and dedication in bringing outstanding educational classes to the community. Signed by our Mayor, Eddie Trevino, Jr., and this Brownsville City Commission. Congratulations, and thank you, guys, both men and women, for everything you do. As you're a man of few words, if you please go to the podium.
Again, thank you very much for that recognition. It's really a great honor to be here, Mayor, commissioners. And again, we're very, very proud of the work we do here at BISD, and of course, all the different agencies that we're in contact with. And I think foremost, we're trying to improve the quality of education for not only BISD, but our community, and expand that growth, try to invite as many people as we can. It has been great working with all the different agencies in town, Housing Authority again, all the folks that make it happen. It's not one person, it's all of us together here, the staff that is here with me presently. This is all of the staff members, by the way. Some of the staff members are at the sites working right now.
You couldn't get a big enough bus, right, Oscar?
That's right. But some of the staff members are at work right now, teaching. They get out at 8:39 o'clock, so the mission goes on until that hour. So, again, very proud of all the efforts that are made by everyone in here, the staff. And again, the one thing I'd like to say is that it's been an honor to work with all the different aspects of the community. Housing Authority's been there. Every time we need something, they're there, and they also assist in making things happen. Again, very honored. Tomorrow, I have a meeting in San Antonio with Region 20 and with the San Antonio College. We're traveling up there to meet on a new project that I want to bring into BISD and the community, and it's titled "The Pathway for Higher Learning Through the GED Program." So, I'm trying to enhance that area and really try to do it best that we can. But again, thank you so much for this honor, and I know it's well received, and I'm very proud of all the staff members that are part of that, and again, thanks so much.
Thank you for everything that you've done.
Thank you very much. Now, they can treat you to dinner. Thank you all. See you. See y'all. How was your last night in North Dakota? You're atkinson, right? What's your last night? All right.
Proclamation for Staff Sergeant Hector Renee Betis. Commissioner Atkinson?
Okay. Can the family come up, please? I'm going to have to read it from here because we don't have the mic, and I want it to be heard. Can I, you want to hold this? Honor read this proclamation. It was brought to me by State Rep. Eddie Lucio III, who's been trying to help the family here, and I think it was our duty as commissioners to help out and, you know, just recognize the sacrifice Hector Renee Betis made for his country and for the people here in Brownsville. It's a proclamation of the City Commission of Brownsville, Texas, remembering and honoring U.S. Army Staff Sergeant Hector Renee Betis. Born October 22, 1962, lay to rest July 24, 2003. Whereas, born in Corpus Christi, Texas on October 22, 1962, Staff Sergeant Hector Renee Betis moved to Brownsville as a young man, and for the rest of his life called Brownsville his home. And whereas, Staff Sergeant Hector Renee Betis worked in Brownsville, attended college here, joined the Texas Army National Guard here, married a local girl, Elisa Sparza, and fathered three daughters. And whereas, in 1993, Staff Sergeant Hector Renee Betis went regular, enlisting in the U.S. Army, beginning a career that he would follow for the rest of his life. And whereas, Staff Sergeant Hector Renee Betis was passionate about his military profession, often saying that his family was his life and the army was his joy. And whereas, Staff Sergeant Hector Renee Betis lived by a personal motto, "If 500 men were to die to save 10,000 men, and if I'm one of the 500, then so be it." And whereas, on July 24, 2003, Staff Sergeant Hector Renee Betis was killed by a rocket-propelled grenade near Mosul, north of Al Huaad, Iraq, leaving his widow and three young daughters, all of whom are now striving to make a new life in Brownsville. And whereas, Staff Sergeant Hector Renee Betis is a hero to his family and indeed all Americans because he fought and gave his life for a cause he believed in, freedom for his family and freedom for us all. Now, therefore, we, the members of the City Commission of the City of Brownsville, Texas, by virtue of the authority vested by the Charter of said city, do hereby honor and remember U.S. Army Staff Sergeant Hector Renee Betis, a decorated soldier who gave his life in the service of his country. Done on this day, the 17th of April, 2007. Signed by Mayor Eddie Trevino, Jr., and the rest of the City Commission. Thank you. Do you have a few words for us?
Good afternoon. I'm the widow, Elisa Perez. I didn't have anything prepared because I wanted to speak from the heart. He's been missed throughout these three years and nine months. I've been working on trying to get a street name after him because I think that's the least that he deserves. I want to thank everybody for acknowledging him. He shouldn't be the only one to be acknowledged. Our soldiers are putting 110%, and they're not asking questions. They're giving it with all their hearts. They know exactly what they're leaving behind. They're leaving their daughters, their wives, their family members. My daughters will not be walked down that aisle with their father, or they will not see, he will not see them go to their first prom. He will not see them graduate, but I know he's seeing them from up above. I want everybody to touch their hearts and make this possible, to honor him by naming a well-known street without hesitations, without questions, because he didn't ask questions. He just fought for his country. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item two, consent agenda items A through C.
Mayor, some move to approve?
Second. On item eight, on the minutes, it needed to reflect the statement by our finance director that if the contract were approved, that in all likelihood, there would be a necessity of a tax increase, and also Commissioner Longoria's statement that this commission would not support a tax increase in the future. I think that needs to be part of the minutes. All right, we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Zanos?
With that change?
With that change, second by?
Second.
Commissioner Arroyo, all in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Item three?
Okay. Item three, public hearing and action on first reading of protest ordinance number 235-2007-601-CU, allowing a conditional use permit for the sale of off-premise alcohol less than 200 feet from a public school convenience store, lot 1.16 acres of Block 9 of Acacia Lake Gardens subdivision located near Morningside and Southmost Road.
Honorable commission, in this case tonight, this is a protested case. It would need just a simple majority to override the Plan Zoning Commission to deny. In this specific case, this is for conditional use for the sale of alcohol for a convenience store on the corner of Morningside and Southmost Road. As you can see here from the map, this is Morningside, this is the area for the conditional use, and this is Southmost Road. In here, as you can see from the colors, the different colors of our zoning map, there's different uses. You have Lopez Supermarket immediately across the street, and then you have some commercial zoning as well down the street here. In this specific case, the Plan Zoning Commission voted to deny this application or this conditional use permit basically because of the proximity to the school. The ordinance requires it to be a distance of more than 200 feet away from a convenience store that sells alcohol.
from a convenience store that sells alcohol. This is a public hearing.
What is the distance between Rosa del Castillo and Lopez Supermarket?
It would, keep in mind that...
What is the distance?
It used to be El Pronto. It's a little over 200 feet, but...
I don't think it's 200 feet.
Well...
I don't even think it's 200 feet, Ben. I was there yesterday.
The right-of-way...
It's more towards the corner.
The right-of-way of Southmost Road is upon 100 feet, and then you have the distance to the building. So it would be close to 200 feet, a little less, but...
Did Rosa del Castillo Administration or BISD complain?
We requested their comment, and we talked to the principal. The principal stated that he could not comment on this case and directed us to Ms. Brown. We talked to Ms. Brown personally and awaited a letter, but we'd never received a letter.
So there was no, there was no written or verbal objection posed by the school district?
Or the neighbors?
Yeah, nobody came to the Plan Zoning Commission.
There's been no objection. This is a public hearing.
One more time. This is not for on-premises consumption.
No.
This is not a bar, this is a convenience store.
This is just for...
A convenience store.
A convenience store.
Ben, when we meet the approval of the HEB Wingstop, the Wingstop Establishment there in Southmost, how much, how many, how much feet is that from Cromack?
Oh, Commissioner, those properties are touching. You see, the BISD property technically comes to the middle of the street.
Okay.
And the property where the Wingstop is leasing is the other half, so they're basically touching.
But it was also a conditional use?
And has there been any concerns, objections, a deterioration in the neighborhood as a result of the Wingstop?
Not that I know of.
All right. And that is an on-premises use, this is a convenience store?
That's right.
All right, this is a public hearing, anybody else? Mr. Bernard?
I'm Mark Bernard, I represent the owner, Dale Baldoff, who's here with us tonight.
Welcome back to Brownsville, Mr. Baldoff.
We have several representatives from the SSP Stripes, which used to be known as Circle K, here tonight to be able to answer any questions that we may have.
I have a question.
Sure.
Why'd you all change the name? Now, I mean, it is, I think it's, you know, I know you guys spent years and years developing a name brand, and then you guys spent, but hey, that's okay. That's not, that's not for tonight's consumption.
Just real quick, we had a license agreement from Circle K to use that name that expired November 2006. And so we were forced to change or pay a lot more to continue to use the Circle K.
So money was involved, okay, that answers the question, all right. Are there any other public comments, for or against? All right?
I'd move to close public hearing.
Moving to close by Commissioner Longoria?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Camarillo, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries, this is an action item?
Move to approve?
Motion to approve by Commissioner Atkinson, seconded by Commissioners Zanetos, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. One nay, motion carries. Item four, thank you, good luck.
Item four, public hearing in action on first reading of ordinance number 235-2007-012 to rezone from dwelling G classification to general retail G classification, 16.743 acres out of Blocks 31 and 32 of Rincon Sob Division located near Old Alice Road and FM 511.
Honorable Mayor and City Commission, this is the property here shaded in red. This is, this property was part of a master plan submitted to us by Mr. Simmons. This property and his master plan calls for it to be commercial. The Plan Zoning Commission voted unanimously to approve this application to you.
This is a public hearing?
Some move to close?
Motion to close by Commissioner Zanetos, seconded by Commissioner Camarillo, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries, action?
Move to approve?
Motion to approve by Commissioners Zanetos, seconded by Commissioner Camarillo, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item five?
Item five, public hearing in action on first reading of ordinance number 235-2007-013 to rezone from light retail G classification to dwelling G, lots 1 through 16, Block 2, Section 1, lots 2 through 37, Block 1, lots 1 through 14, Block 3, and lots 1 through 15, Block 4, Section 2 of Rancho Verde subdivision, Sections 1 and Section 2 located near Rancho del Sol Boulevard and Casa del Sol.
Honorable Mayor and City Commission, this is the area shaded in red. You have 511. The Plan Zoning Commission voted unanimously to approve this application to you. This is for residential development.
Mayor Rotem, I say move the close public hearing?
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion approved. Next item?
Move to approve?
Second.
Close public hearing.
I'm sorry, close public hearing, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next item?
Item six, consideration in action to rename Silverado Circle to Staff Sergeant Hector Betis Circle.
Mayor, I put this on the agenda, basically, after talking with the state rep and with Ms. Betis, and obviously coming about now that we may want another street, a more recognized street. I'm gonna go ahead and table this now, and...
Is that their wishes? I'm not sure.
Was that your wish? Okay. No, we're gonna, we're gonna, we need to go back and talk about that, so we'll table this right now and go back and see what can be done. And I just want to thank Commissioner Camarillo and State Rep. Eddie Lucio III for getting me involved in this, and we all got involved and tried to help, do what's right for your husband, and we'll table it now and see what we can do.
Motion to table by Commissioner Atkinson?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Camarillo, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Still, let's go to item 13, please.
Item 13, consideration in action to authorize a memorandum of understanding for a feasibility study to determine the economic issues pertaining to the creation of a tax incremental reinvestment zone in the downtown area.
Mayor, members of the City Commission, I ask that this item be placed on the agenda tonight so that we could seek public approval for memorandum of understanding between ourselves, the city, and Sports Arena Properties, Inc. out of San Diego. We're interested in trying to see jointly if it's feasible to create an additional TERS in the downtown area. I know there's been a lot of interest leading up to this point concerning Capitol Theater and other proposed ventures in the downtown area. The purpose of this memorandum would be to enable us to further pursue a feasibility study to determine whether or not that's economically viable. Mr. Harold Atkins is here from San Diego, if any of you have any additional questions or comments.
If there are any questions, if not, this is an action item?
Move to approve?
Motion to approve by Commissioner Longoria, seconded by Commissioners Zanetos, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you.
Item seven?
Item seven, consideration in action to adopt Budget Amendment Resolution Number 2007-018 to amend the General Fund and Airport Fund to provide funding for the Fire Department's collective bargaining contract and to provide additional funding for the Streets Maintenance Division.
Honorable Mayor, members of the City Commission, this budget amendment will provide funding for the collective bargaining contract in the General Fund as well as the airport. There is a fire station at the airport that is also affected with this particular contract, so we want to make sure that the airport has enough funding to pay for this expenditure. So we are, it also includes $1 million for street-based materials as well as paving contract services of $315,000 for a total budget amendment of $3,048,748. We recommend that this item be approved.
This is one item, but it's two different things.
It's one budget amendment that includes...
Two items.
Two items. And also, as the schedule indicates, with this budget amendment, we'll have a reserve of about 13%.
Hey Jim, can we approve them separately?
I believe since they're both noticed, yes, you can. They're both subject to the notice that we've given.
All right. I want to move to approve the additional funding for the Streets Maintenance Division.
One second?
Seconded by Commissioners Zanetos, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. All right, now, the other item on the Fire Department.
I move to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Atkinson?
How much are we moving?
$3 million? $3,048,748 for that item, is that right?
No, the amount is $1,626,346 for the General Fund and $107,402 for the airport. If you're asking about the collective bargaining...
Yeah, I'm trying to find out, let me see, I'm trying to get the total.
$1,315...
$1 million for the, for the, for the...
$1,315 for the streets, which includes materials and paving contract and services. That's one item for streets. And for the collective bargaining, Fire Department is $1,626,346 from the General Fund and $107,402 from the Airport Fund. But since the Airport Fund does not have sufficient funds, we are asking you to approve a cash transfer from the General Fund to the airport to take care of this funding.
But that, the airport, the funding to the airport is for the fire-related?
Correct.
Okay. All right. We have a motion by Commissioner Atkinson?
I'll second.
Seconded by Commissioners Zanetos, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, nay?
Nay.
Motion carries. Item eight?
Item eight, consideration in action to approve the write-off of $120,723 of airport account receivables considered uncollectible.
Mayor, members of the commission, I'm sorry, Mayor, did you have something? Not to step in front of Mr. Gonzalez, but I think this item appears on the agenda really largely through miscommunication on the staff's part. This is not an action, this is not an item that requires action from the City Commission. This is just a reflection of an accounting change within our own books to transfer this bad debt from one column to the other largely for auditing purposes. We still retain whatever civil remedies exist to common law to pursue this debt, and I think the way it's worded, it may, it may not be clear to the commission what we're actually asking to do. There's, there is no action required, it's just simply, the intention though was to make sure that the commission understood that we were doing that so that there was not any misunderstanding about what staff was undertaking.
How should it read, Jim? Because I was getting ready to vote nay because I voted against Taylor Craft, and I wasn't gonna vote to approve.
I'm sorry, Commissioner.
Go ahead.
The debt exists, I mean, it was a bad business deal, and we did not receive the money that we had anticipated. How we actually reflect the debt on our books is largely administrative, and that's what this is supposed to say.
It's not, it's not giving them, it's not giving them off the hook.
No, sir.
We're still going after them.
I think we need to do everything in our means to try and go and collect this money.
And obviously, we've looked at that. Frankly, their debts far exceed their assets. The way the arrangement was structured, GBIQ was to actually pay the lease payments as a result of job creation, and the city and GBIQ together obviously experienced, or never received, the type of income and revenue that we anticipated. The city didn't actually expend money for them to come, but we did, but, and whether or not we would have had someone else in that space, had they not been there, I don't know. But it does exist nonetheless as a debt on our books, and this is really just to reflect that we're moving it from one column to the other. All of the legal, civil remedies that we have are still available to us irrespective of this bookkeeping change. It probably should have just been in the form more of a memo to advise you rather than to place it on the agenda and indicate that it required any type of official action.
All right, well, it's on here, so this is an action item?
Well, it's not required that you take action, I suppose you can.
Required, okay, well...
It's not. It's just really, I just stood up to give you the information, and it was more inadvertent, I think, that it appeared in this form than intentional.
We can table it, then?
Well, you can just not move and not take any action on it.
All right, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion, Mayor.
To?
Not take action on this item.
So just don't say anything? Is there a motion? No motion, item dies.
I'll take it, I'll take it as a director from what you've told me, that I am to take action if it's possible in any way to pursue this bad debt.
Exactly, that's what we want.
There being no motion, item eight dies for lack of a motion. Item nine?
Item nine, consideration in action on Resolution Number 2007-019, supporting and participating in America's Affordable Communities Initiative that will identify barriers that affect affordable housing and creating a task force that will report to the City Commission in six months with its findings and recommendations that will open the door for families who want to buy or rent an affordable home in our community.
Honorable Mayor and City Commission, this is an initiative started by HUD. You have a brochure in your packet in the last few weeks. Basically, through this resolution, we're asking the city to support in this initiative. Basically, we will create a task force to look really at our permitting or subdivision process, to identify barriers that increase the cost of housing, and identify those barriers and find ways to remedy those to keep our prices as low as possible. And then, once we're participating, we'll share other information from other cities that have taken the same initiative just to do a better job in Brownsville and provide more homes. So we ask for your support.
Ben, I just want to say that it is a great idea. And we can try and offer more affordable housing for people in our community I'm in favor of, so I move to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioners Zanetos?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Longoria, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item 10?
Item 10, consideration in action to authorize the advertising for bids for the Taxway G reconstruction project at the Brownsville South Padre Island International Airport.
Mayor, members of the City Commission, the purpose for this item coming before you this evening is to request your action to authorize staff to advertise for bids for a major reconstruction project at Brownsville South Padre Island International Airport. The project is a $14 million project that will reconstruct Taxway G, a major north-south taxiway. It's illustrated on this photograph. Well, it's a little bit hard to see, and we'll pass out some copies, too.
Turn off the light.
That is a major north-south taxiway that exists on the east side of the airport. The area that you see in the photograph here is concrete ramp. The area right here, this building, is the air freight terminal at the airport, and Taxway G services that, as well as services as a taxiway that connects with the major runway at the airport. The way in which the project will be financed has the city providing interim financing for the project. We have discussed this last week, both Mr. Gonzalez and myself, with the city's financial advisors, as well as the bond counsel obtained their clearance. We anticipate, and we are planning for, the FEA to provide 90%, 95% of the financing to recover the, a portion of the $14 million interim financing. The other 5% of the financing will come from the city's PFC fund, okay? We do have representatives of our engineering firm here this evening. Should you have any engineering questions, also Charles Hamilton of the Airport Advisory Board, the chairman is here, as well as several members of the Airport Advisory Board as well.
Larry, if I may, real quick, you beat me to the punch because I want to recognize, I sit on the Airport Advisory Board, and I want to ask Mr., our board chairman, Mr. Charles Hamilton, if you can please stand. We also have Mr. Bud Brown and Gene Sepka. Thank you, guys, and all the other board members for all the hard work that you do for us at the airport. Thank you. Sorry for that, go ahead.
Make a long story short, we recommend that the City Commission authorize the advertisement for bids. We'll be happy to address any questions.
Are there any questions? This is part of a long-term investment that we need to rehab our airport, and it's going to assist us in a number of different endeavors down at the airport, so I would move that we approve this item?
Second?
Seconded by Commissioner Arroyo, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Next item?
Item 11, consideration in action to authorize the lease of a portion of Airport Building Number 16, the former Neoplex, Neoplan Complex.
Mayor, members of the City Commission, we are requesting your authorization this evening to enter into a lease agreement with the fine-tuning details subject to review by the city attorney, as well as Mr. Sanchez, who is the attorney for the MRO. What this will do effectively is to create a new form of aviation enterprise, not only at the airport, but also in the community. We feel this is very important for the economic benefit of the airport as well as the community. It not only will create new permanent jobs at the airport, but it will provide for the airport to serve its function even better than it does in terms of aviation-related activity at the airport. It's up to the commission, but I would suggest if you, if you have an opportunity, perhaps what you'd like to do is call upon the developers for the, the MRO who are here this evening. Okay?
Would you like to say a few words, please?
As, uh, we've had several meetings with the Airport Advisory Board and have presented them with a proposed lease, which has gone back and forth and has been tailored to try and meet the, uh, the realities of today's economy. And, um, essentially, it's a, uh, what we consider to be a fair lease and, and we are going to perform quite a few leasehold improvements, permanent leasehold improvements, none of which will be able to be extracted from the building upon the termination of the lease, which includes, uh, the improvement of the aprons around the hangars, uh, fire suppression systems and a general upgrade of all of the existing hangars that we would be occupying. The initial, uh, employment would be approximately sixty employees and if everything goes well, it could increase up to two hundred employees within twelve months. And that being said, uh, it's a long-term lease, it's, uh, initial period of, of ten years with, I believe, three ten-year options. And, um, and we would, um, in, in, in addition to performing the leasehold improvements, we would only take three of the unoccupied buildings right now and if things go well, then we would ask to increase the size of the lease and the area. But at the present time, we would be more than satisfied with the unoccupied buildings. And if you have any questions, we'd be glad to answer.
Any questions?
Moving to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Atkinson, seconded by Commissioner Longoia. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Good luck, gentlemen.
Good luck.
We're behind you.
Okay, doctors.
Item twelve.
Item twelve, consideration in action to purchase property located on block ninety-one, lot ten of Brownsville original townsite.
Good evening, mayor, city commissioners. Um, we're here this evening to ask, uh, your authorization to purchase the fir-, the fourth property in the location of the multimodal terminal project as we discussed in the executive session.
Would approve?
Second.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Longoia, seconded by Commissioner Camarillo, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item fourteen.
Item fourteen, consideration in action to authorize a lease agreement between the city of Brownsville and the Brownsville Historical Association for the lease of property known as Market Square located at six thirty-four East Twelfth Street and Market Square, Brownsville, Cameron County, Texas.
Would approve?
Second.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Longoia, seconded by Commissioner Atkinson, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Good luck with this project, Charlie, Larry, everybody associated with it.
Did a great job.
This is great. Professor Hop, thank you.
Thank you.
I'll tell you what, you know, just, if you could just quickly, for the benefit of the viewing audience, let them know what, what we just did. That's how, that's how excited we are about it, we didn't even want to hear about it.
Mr. Loaf's the president of the, of the Brownsville Historic Association, he'll give you in-depth, uh, information in relation to this project, uh, mayor.
Just give us a brief overview, Larry, if you don't mind, so that the citizens understand what we're doing.
Well, the, uh, brief overview is that, uh, essentially, one of the most important historic buildings in Brownsville, uh, forms, uh, an important part of revitalization of downtown. Uh, a couple of things. One is that the old city vaults become a place where we store the archives and the very valuable photographs of the history of South Texas. Uh, we all worry about now what happens during hurricanes. Uh, we also have a, a dedicated area that will deal with the history of Market Square and downtown and tell the story of, of that area. You know, Market Square is more than just a pile of bricks and lumber. It is, uh, it is a whole series of stories that have gone on from before the Civil War and all the way through and it changes, it's, it's an interesting, fascinating thing. The, uh, we also want to return the area that used to be the city market into an area known as El Mercado. And that area will have hopefully the flavor of, of what it once was, open, uh, and where artisans and people can come and visit and, uh, and presentations can be made. And finally, uh, well, two other parts. One, a, uh, interpretation center for the Safety Museum, for the police and so forth in the old building that was once the, uh, the center of the police and fire and safety, which is the above Peter Goodman's office in that area. And then finally, uh, an interpretation area that deals with the history of, of the river and how it ties together this whole area through the last century. I was just up at the Texas Historic Commission this last week and it is fascinating to see the attention that South Texas is now getting and it is really, people are turning their attention to see what we have down here. And it's a, this is a great opportunity to really shine and to make a difference downtown. So, we really appreciate this opportunity and we hope to do you all right because after all, this is a city building and it's probably the oldest municipal building in use until, and still is for city purposes in this whole region.
Let me ask you something real quick. I know we're vitalizing it downtown, are we making preparations for like parking for people when people do come down there, I mean?
We, we, parking, I think, is going to be addressed, we're going to move slowly into this because people, uh, still, there are offices there that are going to be used for a while and so forth. So we're going to be moving slowly into this and as bus is moved to another area, uh, that will allow parking to return to the area around Market Square as it once was and it can be parking that is dedicated for the use of, of people visiting the interpretation center. So I think parking in the long term, in the short term, parking is going to be a challenge. Parking in the long term, I think, is going to be, uh, is going to be dealt with. It, we have the same issue with, uh, Stillman Hall Museum, uh, and all of that. If people get there when they really want to, people find their way to your area.
That's a point, Larry, that we need to make is that the, what we're hoping, when this is all said and done, is that there will be numerous, um, sites for people to see and, and, uh, the reality is a little bit of walk is going to help everybody. So, while parking certainly will still be an issue, uh, we hope that everybody takes advantage and exercises their, their joints and limbs to get from one site, for example, the Stillman House, to the old Market Square. But, we appreciate it, we wish you all the best, we know this is going to be a successful project for the city of Brownsville and for the Historical Association. So, thank you.
We appreciate the opportunity.
Good luck.
Thank you, Slav.
Item fifteen.
Item fifteen, consideration in action to authorize an agreement between the city of Brownsville and the Cameron County Elections Administrator for the conduct of the May twelfth, two thousand and seven general municipal election.
Would approve?
Second.
Hold on. Did you, did you need to say anything else?
The only thing I have to say is it's, it's the standard contract and we still have the same estimate, which is sixty-four thousand, two hundred and eighty-nine dollars and fifty cents. The costs are going to be shared with the county.
Did we not approve this at the last?
We had approved a resolution, but this is basically a formality because we want to go ahead and be on record that we had presented the contract.
Okay, all right. A motion to approve by Commissioner Atkinson, seconded by Commissioner Arroyo, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item sixteen.
Item sixteen, consideration in action to authorize the acceptance and execution of the Texas Department of Transportation Selective Traffic Enforcement Program Click-It or Ticket Grant awarded to the Brownsville Police Department in the amount of sixteen thousand dollars from May twenty-one through June third, two thousand and seven.
Mayors, members of the city commission, good evening. This is a grant that's been awarded to Texas, to the city of Brownsville, specific to Brownsville Police Department to do a step, uh, selective traffic enforcement from the time period of May twenty-first through June the third. And the correction on the amount is fifteen thousand one hundred and ninety-six, not sixteen thousand, it's a hundred percent reimbursable.
What's the total amount, chief?
Fifteen thousand one nine six.
So move to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioners Nettles, seconded by Commissioner Arroyo, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item seventeen.
Item seventeen, consideration in action to authorize the Brownsville Police Department to accept and execute Operation Stone Garden funded through the Department of Homeland Security, United States Customs and Border Protection in the amount of fifty-three thousand five hundred and fifty-eight dollars and forty cents from April fifteenth through April twenty-eighth, two thousand and seven.
This is also a grant that's been, um, awarded through the Homeland Security funding. Uh, the date has been pushed back to April the twenty-second, um, and the amount is correct there for fifty-three thousand five, five hundred and fifty-eight and forty cents and it's a hundred percent reimbursable.
So move to approve.
Motion's approved by Commissioner Nettles, seconded by Commissioner Camarillo, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed.
I'm going to abstain from this because of my litigation with the Department of Homeland Security.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. One abstention by Commissioner Atkinson. Item eighteen.
Item eighteen, consideration in action to award a contract for architectural consulting services, phase one for renovation, design and construction management services for the Stegman Building located at five thirty-one East Eleventh Street.
Honorable mayor, commissioners, the request of our planning and community development director, Mr. Ben Medina, the purchasing department solicited statements of qualifications for this project. It's the intent of the city of Brownsville to contract with an architectural design consultant for the purpose of performing renovation, design and construction management of the Stegman Building located at five thirty-one East Eleventh. As you may recall, this commission approved the purchase of that building last year. The firm will be responsible for all aspects of the renovation design through construction supervision for the renovation of the exterior of the building and conversion of the second floor to residential living, which marks a first for the downtown area. The project will include all related architectural and engineering services. This project will be completed in two phases. We bring before you this evening the first phase, which will consist of the production of a set of drawings which will identify locations of walls, windows, doors, structural support columns, structural spacing. Will also include information about any structural problems, roof conditions, et cetera, et cetera. This is a discovery phase. Uh, the statements of qualifications were received from four firms during the early summer of last year. Those statements of qualifications were submitted to the evaluation committee. Evaluation committee ranked those statements of qualifications and as a result, the firm of Walker Pettis Associates received the highest ranking. We went through the standard negotiation process and we bring before you this evening a, a contract that we think is favorable and is fully grant-funded for this phase one of the project. The value is eighteen thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars.
I only have one question, Paul. I see that the selection review started last summer and approval in July and negotiations in, in August, but...
It's April.
Yeah, from August until February. Was that, why was there such a...
We had, we had a little blackout at the planning department there for a while.
They just, they just kind of fell through the cracks?
Other projects took precedent.
All right.
There, there was nothing to report about that other than just other things were going on.
All right, this is an action item?
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Arroyo, seconded by Commissioner Camarillo, all in favor? All opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
One public comment, Mr. Reese. His subject item is debt. You have three minutes, sir.
I asked for five.
You, you have three minutes, Mr. Reese.
Okay, I want to thank you all for having me here today.
May I interrupt? I'm sorry, Mr. Reese, uh, I know you've been here and you've made comments, but I always forget before meetings start to advise everyone who comments that they're not supposed to address anyone by, on the city commission by night.
Sir, I, I've been to so many meetings, more than you, I know what I'm doing here.
Good, thank you.
Right now. Now.
I'm here because I need to tell you something and it's good that you left the constituency to speak at the very last when everyone is gone. That goes to show the people of this community, the arrogance of this commission and I would really recommend that they don't even go and vote. Business here is as usual, disrespectful to the constituent. Let me tell you something else. Besides that, I have a note here that I need to let the people of Brownsville know that the PUB is in debt for one billion dollars, of which the mayor and some other bureaucrats and politicians went to New York to renegotiate the debt of the PUB without even letting you know what it was all about. They came back to let you know that they had a one percent decrease in the interest after they bought an insurance for one million dollars. This to me is no transparency. This to me spells corruption. And something has to be done. The system is broke. The politicians and the bureaucrats are completely out of hand. Disrespectful to the constituency is the number one mortal sin. We are the government, don't you forget. And you know what? I just hope nobody goes and votes because we're going to end up with the same thing over and over and over. We have to reinvent government here in the city of Brownsville. Thank you.
You still have another minute? All right. Thank you so much for being here, Mr. Reese, always a pleasure. This meeting's adjourned.